The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under our umbrella, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's remain standing. This evening in our county and heavenly Father, we come to you, thank you for this day. We thank you for each and every life that's in this building today. We thank you for each and every life that's in our great Chester County. We ask that you continue to bless our lives, bless our children, bless our government, bless our citizens. And then, Lord, I ask that you continue to bless the hearts and minds of each and every person involved in this county government, so that the people of this county can continue to move forward. These are all of the things, asking your son Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Guy.
Okay, moving along to approval of minutes from February the 20th, 2024. Need a motion on that?
I make a motion, we approve the minutes of February 20th, 24.
Okay, need a second?
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion and second? Any discussion? Hear none? All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now the most vote. Okay, moving along to citizens' comments. We have one signed up for that, and Mr. John Messi. John Messi, 171 East Lacy Street, Chester. I was told before the meeting, I should ask the council, if we were permission, could I get the clerk to hand these photos out? This is all about, all about a first responder and veteran's virtual memorial. Memorial that would allow family, additional families, to honor the service and sacrifice of their family members and friends, long-serving, sometimes generational service, that would otherwise be overlooked, ignored. Virtual memorials only exist in cyberspace, on a computer's hard drive. This is not unproven latest technology. Counties elsewhere, different states, have been using these, at least one, for more than a decade. Virtuals are being used to supplement real-world remembrances, make them better, more accessible. Two photos that you have demonstrate one life experience of many that could be best shared virtually. Photo one, this collage of smaller photos that no marble or granite memorial would normally provide, tell us what was held dearest by this first responder and veteran. We see a 20-plus, then 30-plus-year-old firefighter, paramedic, with ties to three local counties living the best life. A firefighter first in Lockhart, part-time EMS in both Union and Chester, firefighter and paramedic, York County. This young man was also serving in the South Carolina National Guard when those photos were taken. It was a freak, no-fault, early morning traffic accident that took this 36-year-old from his family, December 23rd, 2022, just two days before Christmas. Photo two, shown here, this is the widow shown here with the two tender-aged children, firefighter's turnout coat being shown in the background, triangle-framed flag of a veteran there and containing his ashes, all there. Notice everyone is smiling while clinging close to one another. This is a very powerful, very moving photograph. It proves faith and resilience, the ability to carry on while falling apart. This is what he would have wanted. Of the hundreds of first responder veterans' photos already gathered as a Chester County initial database, should I be allowed only one, we see that here. Closing, virtual memorials should be less expensive, easier to maintain compared to real world. They are simple to use. Add a smartphone-scannable QR code to this photo, place it anywhere. Mr. Messi? Three minute. Yeah, if you wrap it up, you can go ahead and wrap it up. All right, thank you, I appreciate it. What scan the code provides the link to the county-based first responder veteran's computer, where the information is stored. The software then allows the user to navigate from there, search by first responder or veteran's name, service date, in-county service group, branch of service, war conflict, war or conflict. Contact me for details. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Messi. Okay, at this time, we'll open up the public hearing. And first on that would be Ms. Grazer Ray to bring forth the needs and assessment hearing for the Community Development Block Grant. She's from the Catawba Regional Council of Government. Welcome, Ms. Ray.
Thank you so much for having me. And Elizabeth Morgan is also here with me from Catawba Regional, and she's going to pass out some signing sheets in case some people did not sign in outside, so we can know who's here. But thank you for having me here again. This is my annual meeting with you to kind of go over your needs assessments and the process. But first of all, we actually are doing a closeout hearing for the Dawson Drive Sewer Improvements Project. That project is nearing completion, and it was funded with a Community Development Block Grant project, our funds, of $804,000. And it was, we upgraded the 100-year-old sewer lines in the Dawson Drive area. It included construction of ductile iron pipe, as well as PVC pipe, eight inches in that area. And we had to also go under the railroad, which was a challenge, but it got done. And so, and then the other thing that was somewhat of a challenge, we had, we got, we had an easement, had to get an easement from the Church of God of Prophecy, and in exchange for that easement, their parking lot was paid, so they got a good deal on that, too. But everything's in, I think they're about to finish with the parking lot, and that project will be closed out. In fact, the state came and monitored it last week, and we got a clear, clear monitoring on that, so that is being closed out. The total project cost for this was $1,275,728, and of this, $1,070,336 was spent for sewer construction, $137,275 was spent for engineering, $14,116 was spent for acquisition, $54,000 was spent for administration. So of all those, total project cost, $804,000, as I said, was paid by the Community Development Block Grant, and the Chester County Wastewater Recovery Fund, funds were used to pay the remaining, $471,728. So that was a great project, we're glad that it's finished, and now those people in that area have good and safe sewer. So I wanted to report on that. Then the next one, the thing I need to report on is the Citizens' Participation Plan, and this is a plan that the county has that pretty much says that y'all don't have private meetings, that you publicize all your meetings, and with the Community Development Block Grant Program, I'm going to call it the CDBG, we have to do a needs assessment hearing, that's what we're doing tonight. We have to advertise any of these hearings at least seven days prior to the meetings in the paper, and then they're also posted. Then we also have another hearing when you have an application, so people can come and comment on that. And then, if there are any changes, once it's funded, if there are any changes with the project, we have public hearings then, and then we do a closeout public hearing. That's what we did tonight with the Dawson Drive. So this is a plan, the Citizens' Participation Plan that this county has, and your clerk, the clerk, the council has a copy in her office if anybody wants to see one. So the next thing is to review, well, first of all, is to say that y'all also, the county supports fair housing in April, which is coming up, y'all passed a proclamation to support fair housing and do different activities for that. So I just wanted to make sure that the citizens know that y'all do support fair housing. I will give a brief overview of the program, the CDBG program for 2024 and 2025. There have been a few changes since last year, which I will tell you about, but for those of you who are not familiar with this program, it is a Housing and Urban Development, H-HUD, program, and funds are allocated on the federal level and are sent down to each state. In South Carolina, those funds flow through the Department of Commerce, and that is who all of the localities who are eligible, like Chester County, we actually submit applications to the Department of Commerce, and then they come and review everything, make sure everything's okay. The, all CDBG projects must address at least one of three national objectives, either benefit to low and moderate income persons, elimination of slums and blight, address urgent community needs that pose a serious threat to the health or welfare of the community. Primarily, these funds that we have used in this region have been for low and moderate income. There are three key goals to the CDBG program, to provide decent housing, economic opportunities, and a suitable living environment. Each project must meet one of the following outcomes identified by HUD, affordability, accessibility, or sustainability. This year, for the 2024-25 program year, there's $17.6 million allocated for the Community Development Block Grant programs, which includes four subcategories, community infrastructure, community enrichment, local priorities, and ready-to-go. And so I'm going to give you a brief description of each of these programs. First is the community infrastructure, there's $9 million, not, $9 million available statewide. The grant maximum, which they increased last year, is a million dollars, we can apply for a million dollars now on that. There's a 10% match, and then the eligible activities are infrastructure, which are water, sewer, roads, or drainage activities. That was what the Dawson Drive was funded under. Those application requests are actually due the 22nd of this month, and the application requests, and the applications will be due April 22nd. So we are in the process of getting all those done now, and y'all did not have one at this point, but maybe next year you will. And a lot of times, just to let y'all know, a lot of times, since y'all are really not in the water and sewer business, you usually will partner with Chester Wastewater Recovery or Chester Metropolitan District, and as you know, the Dawson Drive project was in conjunction with Chester Wastewater Recovery. So that's what we work, we work closely with them, and y'all will sponsor those applications. Community enrichment is, those are, there's 17.1, I mean, $7.1 million statewide, the grant maximum is $750,000, and there's a 10% match. The eligible activities are a lot of different activities we can do under this, we can do brownfield projects or demolition of obsolete buildings. We did one for Chester County a while ago that cleared the Springsteen site, so we can do those sort of brownfield projects. We can do downtown streetscape improvements, and then we can do libraries, library facilities or services that, let's see, that where the new, the construction and equipment is for internet connectivity, that's a little bit different. It used to be, it used to have to be directly, directly related to education and job training, but now it's internet connectivity. We can do publicly-owned childcare facilities, this is new also for child 12 and under, such as daycare centers and Head Start preschool programs. We can also do other multi-purpose facilities, like for educational training or workforce training. We can also do publicly-owned facilities that are for services for the county. Chester County got a one a few years ago to upgrade the DSS building, so those sort of facilities are eligible. One thing that is not eligible, though, is if it's a general government building, like this building. So if it's a building that is just for government services, it is not eligible, but if it's for services for the public, it can be. We can also demolish vacant and dilapidated residential structures in targeted low, moderate income areas. We can do police substations or fire substations and fire trucks. And one thing to remember on all of those is that it does need to serve a low and moderate income area, so that, sometimes that is a challenge. And if it's, I think we, I've talked to Mr. Hester about this, but it's, if it's a countywide, Chester County is not 51% low and moderate income, so if it's countywide services, that won't, that won't be eligible. But for instance, and we're doing this in Lancaster County, there's, because Lancaster County is the same way, they're not 51% low and moderate income, but then they have several towns within the county that are low and moderate income. So they, right now, they just submitted an application for a park, and it was, it's actually a city park in the city of Lancaster, and the city of Lancaster is 51% low and moderate income, so that one qualified, and it got funded. So there might be something that y'all might want to partner with the city of Chester, they're over 51% low and moderate income, and so is Great Falls. So those are some, maybe some opportunities we can talk about in the future. You can also do ADA accessibility and energy efficiency for CDBG-eligible public facilities, so there might be some other public facilities that, and that's another thing, they have to be public facilities, but they also have to be owned by the county or the town or the city, so that's another thing to remember. We can also do new or upgraded sidewalks in low, moderate income residential areas. This has changed a little bit, that might help counties. Before, it was, before, we couldn't do sidewalks at all, but a couple of years ago, they added that we could do new sidewalks if it was in an area that would tie that area to a downtown area. And now they're saying that we can do upgraded, because there are a lot of bad sidewalks around, and I know we've talked about the city of Chester, but it has to be in low and moderate income residential areas, so just something to remember about that. Those applications are, the application requests are due the middle of August, and the applications are due September the 16th. So we will start working on those projects and trying to identify them and probably in June, so we can get those going. The next one is the Local Priorities Program, and there's a million dollars available statewide. Grant maximum is $300,000, and the match is 10%. These are for maybe some different projects. In fact, the park project that I mentioned for Lancaster County, that came under this, the Local Priority. So it's for projects that might not be eligible for some other programs, but they want us to kind of think outside the box. We can't, what they say we can do things for, they gave, they gave some examples of historic preservation, innovation, energy conservation, parks, trails, and greenways. And we can also do new or expanded public service activities. The other thing, the main thing, though, there again, to remember, is that you need to, they need to be serving at least 51% low and moderate income people. So that's, that's another one. So that's, those applications are also due in September, the middle of September, we will be requesting those applications the middle of August. Then we have a ready-to-go public facilities program, and there's $500,000 statewide, and you can ask for 500,000, so they, they don't usually get too many of these, so they didn't put much in there. But those, those projects are usually for, they can be for infrastructure projects or community enrichment projects. They're usually, would be for probably public facilities, you might have sewer lines that go out, or water lines failing, that you might not be able to wait for a whole year to apply. So if you go on and have it ready to go, it has to be designed by an engineer, it has to be permitted by DHEC and whomever else, and then absolutely ready to go to bid within 90, 90 days of when the project's funded. But you can apply for it anytime during the year. And we have used this sum over the years for projects that didn't really quite get ready in time to apply for them, but they were ready in about six months. So you can apply anytime for those. Then the other one that is not part of the ones that you have to, that are competitive, is the Business Development Program. There's a million dollars available on this statewide, and it's based on, the amount of money that you can get is based on the number of jobs that are created, and it's usually $10,000 per job. These projects, the county used to get some, all of our, all of the four counties in our region used to get a lot of these in years past, but we haven't in recent years, nor have any other, not, they don't do many of them, because I think a lot of that money they spend for bigger projects. But it comes through your Economic Development Department, it would come, come through them, and what happens is, a company might become an in, and they might need water, sewer, whatever they need, and the Economic Development Department goes to the Department of Commerce and sits down with them, and there's a lot of different pots of money and say, where can this fit? So I think a lot of, a lot of times, these funds are not used for economic development, because we have to do an environmental review, which takes about nine months. A lot of times, companies are in a lot more hurry than we can do for this, and then a lot of times, companies don't want to sign a letter that says, I'm going to create so many jobs within, you know, five years, and we're going to put in so much money. So they usually don't use that, this money, but, but it can be used. So that is a brief overview of the programs and what you can apply for. Are there any questions about that at all?
Let me ask you a question. You mentioned one thing, and that air conditioner's running, and I saw, I can't hear it well, but at any rate. You were talking about the fire service being a countywide, and that was kind of a no-no. And because of what that is, is the median income of the county is greater than what the application would be, so the little, smaller towns, the median income in those probably would qualify, and someplace like Richburg now, we've had some people move out, the median income in Richburg is probably substantially below that requirement. So would we, would the town of Richburg come to y'all?
Yes, they would, but, but they are not, believe it or not, I don't think they are low and moderate income, according to the census data. And some of the census data is getting ready, because we're still using 2015, HUD gives us the limits, and they're still using the 2015 limits or census data, so that's going to be updated, so that might change. We're kind of afraid, some of them, of course, I hate to say this, but like Chester or Great Falls, we don't want them to get above, we really do, but we don't for this. But I know when we, and a good example is when we tried to get a fire truck for y'all, for Richburg, and it didn't qualify. One thing, and it's because it was...
The median income was...
It's too high. Another thing that happens with the fire services and police services, because a lot of times, a fire service might be more, say, Richburg's a good example, you don't just cover the area of Richburg, you cover it outside of Richburg, so we have to count those people, too. And sometimes there's, we can get census data from block grants, I mean, not block grants, but blocks, census blocks, and census tracts, block groups and tracts, but it's very rare that it falls within those boundaries. Now, you can always do income surveys, but if you have hundreds of people to survey, that's very difficult.
Those people moved out, they moved right up the street to Union ARP Church, and so I know they're, they're not there anymore.
Okay.
So for the sake of argument, if the town came to you, that would be something that they could do from their standpoint of providing services to the citizens within the town of Richburg.
Well, if they are low and moderate income, yes. But tell them, and we send out notices about all of these things to all the towns and counties in the region, so, but we're glad, and I know some of those people well, so we're very happy to talk to any of them. And that's one thing, I tell everybody when we do these, y'all, y'all and the towns, y'all are the boots on the ground, y'all know what's going on and what the needs are, we don't. And so that's why we try to sit down and meet with whomever and, and try to flush out what we can do and what, what might, what might work. And I know one thing, we did talk to Richburg about a couple of years ago, was a food pantry, because I think, don't y'all have a food pantry, maybe with Fort Long?
Yeah.
Fort Long.
And we can't do that right now, but we had a, the state Department of Commerce, they have a comment period, too, and one of the state Department of Commerce staff, who's one of the reps, she said, because she knew that we had kind of looked at that before, and she said, and it's not eligible right now, and she said, give that as a comment, so we did. So it sounds like they might be thinking about some different things, so something like that definitely would, would be eligible, and then, because then, you're counting the people who are the participants, not the whole town. Same thing when we did the DSS building, we, even though it served the whole county, the participants were the clients, I mean, the clients were the participants, so they were the beneficiaries, so we could prove by, by them that it, that it is, that they're, it qualified. So there are a lot of different ways to do it.
Just one quick follow-up, are y'all going to be involved in the water symposium that's going to be at Tigger K at the end of the month?
I don't, I don't, I'm not, I don't know if anybody else in our, on our staff is, but I will ask about it.
Water pressure out in that area is what is really hurting the area out there, there's volume, but there's not enough pressure.
And that's in?
In Richburg.
In Richburg, okay. And the, and the symposium is?
The symposium is, I can't remember the date, but it's in this month at Tigger K, and there's going to be water companies from Chester County participating, Chester Metropolitan participating, Rock Hill, those type of things.
Well, I'll find out about it, good to know. Okay, if there are no other, are there any other questions? Well, the next thing to do is to look at your needs list, and y'all have a copy of the needs list in your packets, and I will read these off so that the people in the, attending the hearing can hear. These were ones that you came up with in March of 2023, so you might want to do some changes, or additions, or deletions. The first one is usually the first one that we put on most of our, most of our needs list, because most localities have, have problems with their water, sewer, sanitary, water, sanitary sewer and storm sewer infrastructure. So we said, upgrade the water, sanitary sewer, storm sewer infrastructure and services in low and moderate income areas, including infrastructure upgrades in the East Chester, Lancaster Street, Saluda Street, and McClure Street in the city of Chester, and water upgrades in the Lincolnville Street neighborhood, and storm drainage in the Cedar Grove area of Chester County. This also includes the upgrade of the Sandy River Wastewater Treatment Plant. I think that was put on there because Chester Wastewater Recovery was thinking about doing a project for that. The second is address slums and blighted areas. This includes the clearance of brownfield areas, as well as the following abandoned mills, the Great Falls Mills, number one, two, and three, Eureka Mill and the Gale Mill. This also includes the demolition of dilapidated buildings and residences in low and moderate income areas. I know right now, we're actually finishing up a project, we're nearing completion for the Great Falls Mill, number one, so you probably, that probably can be eliminated, I would think, because we're doing it. And that's been a great, that's been a great project, and I know, Mr. Vaughn, you can see a huge difference of what was there and what's not.
Yeah, it looks great.
Yeah, it does look good. The third is to renovate or construct the following facilities, a facility for the joint location of services to include SC DHEC, SC Works, and the Chester County Board of Disabilities and other agencies. So, and I know there was talk about that, to maybe even do something, add on to the DSS building to do those things. Probate Judge's Office in the Federal Building, York County Recreation Complex, I know Rodman is underway, and the Republic Park, I guess Republic Park is at Dawson Drive, or are those two separate ones?
Those are separate.
Okay, separate. They might need to have ADA upgrades, and those are the sort of things that really are eligible under that ADA, so that's something to be aware of. The next one was county jail, I don't know that that would be eligible, but you, and even though, you might have some things on this list that are not eligible for the CDBG, but they're still your needs, so they certainly can stay. Fourth was create a strategic plan for housing, and I understand on March 3rd, y'all are going to have a workshop about that. Fifth was support additional Chester County library facilities to provide education and training for low and moderate income citizens in order to enhance employment opportunities. Six was expand water, sanitary sewer, and storm sewer to low and moderate income areas currently not being served. Seventh is construct and upgrade, to construct and upgrade infrastructure to provide economic development through the expansion of existing industries and location of new industries. Eighth is extend water, sewer, and other infrastructure services to affordable housing sites in order to promote housing opportunities for low and moderate income persons. Ninth is extend water and sewer along I-77 corridor, including the SC Highway 97 interchange at exit 55. Ten is implement improvements, implement improvements to make the I-77 and South Carolina Highway 9 interchange less dangerous, including the addition of turning lanes, and I know that y'all have just added lighting there. And eleventh, the... And eleventh, upgrade sidewalks. Here we go, in the sidewalks, to include Ashford Street, Fromella to JA Cochrane Bypass, the areas from Parkway Avenue, Avenue to the JA Cochrane Bypass, York Street, the Gale Mill Village, Brendel, Brendel, Brendel Street, and the areas along JA Cochrane Bypass, and sidewalks in the town of Fort Long. And the second, the twelfth is just something we always add, is to continue to further fair housing in Chester County. So is there anything you want to add to this list or delete from the list?
Is it any, how much in the future can any council person come with your project, if they got one?
How many, I'm sorry?
Is it a deadline before you, those grants can stop the assessment needs and stuff?
Oh, that, no, well, we, it's too late to apply for infrastructure for now. But the deadline for, oh, you mean, as far as coming up with this, there's really not because y'all are not applying for anything. And, and you might want to take this and think about it. And, you know, I can, I can write, well, write the little notes, notes that I have on mine on y'all's, so you'll know about it. And then, but there is, the only thing is, we've got to have it completed before we apply for, yeah. The county is part of, the four counties, Chester, Lancaster, Union, and York Counties, all apply for the planning grant that pays us to do this sort of thing. And we do need to have it done before we apply for that, which is in, in May, so-
If any council person has anything they'd like to present to Mrs. Ray, just give her a call. She's very knowledgeable, and she can probably give you a yes or no on it, where it's applicable or not, if you just give her a call.
And what I'll do is, like I said, type this up with the changes in there, and just send it back to Mr. Hester, and then send it on, and then see if y'all just agree or not agree. And I'll look, too, because you want to make sure if there's something that you do want to apply for, that it's in the top three. So if we need to move anything around. Now, the ones we talked about, like on the ADA for the parks, that's under the third, that's under the third one already. If you want to do, I know there's been some talk about maybe doing some with, with Chester wastewater recovery. There's been some discussion over the last couple of years to maybe do a joint application to do a, a streetscape project coming into Chester, like on 72, on Saluda Street. I think the reason they were involved, they were interested in that was because they needed some sewer improvements, and in a streetscape, we could probably do that, too. Or Lancaster Street coming into Chester that way. So that might be something that you want to do. And I don't know where we have, we might want to look at, look at, look at making sure that's up at the top, if y'all are interested.
CWR would have to apply for that, correct?
Excuse me?
A CWR would have to apply-
No, they can't apply. The county would have to apply. And what we talked about is, because both of those streets, part of it's in the county and part of it's in the city. So we kind of like to maybe have the city apply for park, and the county apply for park, but we're, it, it's just in the discussion stages right now. But we feel like that might be a good opportunity.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Any further questions from the council? If not, since this is a public hearing, if anybody in the audience would have any comments or questions from Ms. Ray. Here none, we'll close that part of the public hearing and go on to the next one. The one thing I'd like to mention, though, we have one, number F, on this public hearing. We need to remove it, but it'll be addressed in another portion of the agenda. It was inadvertently put on that, so just strike, if anybody have any objection to that. Okay, if not, we'll strike F on this, which is CCMA 24, which has to do with a zoning, which they had the public hearing in the zoning meeting. It, it just inadvertently got put on there. So here, no refusal will, that'll be addressed in another part, part of it there. So we'll close the public hearing on the needs and assessment, and open it up for the third reading of the amending ordinance 20, 21-8 to adopt the county general fund balance policy and provide for other related matters. Does anyone like to speak to that? Here none, we'll close that portion of it and open up the third reading of 2024-3, providing the allocations of fees received for the development agreement project agreements and other similar arrangements entered into by the county and one or more developers, and providing for other related matters. Would anybody like to speak on that? Here none, we'll close that part of it, and the ordinance, I'm in the public hearing, and then open up D, which is the third reading of the 2024-4, which is amend in chapter two, administration, article four, offices and employees, division five, county attorney of the code of ordinance of Chester County to provide for the position of county attorney and other related matters. Would anybody like to speak on that? Here none, we'll close that and open up a, a public hearing for the third reading of 2024-5, providing for the allocations of funds held in the county capital project fund, and providing for other related matters. Open, public, open that. Would anybody like to speak to that? Okay. If nobody would like to speak, I'll officially close the public hearing then and move on to number six, which is ordinance and resolutions. A is the second reading of 2024-7, revoking existing employees' personal handbooks and related employment policies and procedures and other related enabling ordinance and resolution, adopting an, an employee personnel handbook confirming the county administrative authority to set administrative employment policies and procedures, making conforming changes to the county code of ordinance, and providing for other related matters. That's for the second reading. Need a motion on that?
I'll make a motion, we approve the second reading of 2024-7.
Okay, need a second? Second by Mr. Vaughn? All, any question, discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, if I may. So in front of all council members, there is a supplemental addition to what was provided for all council members to review regarding the changes in the handbook. One thing that we caught this week, or I'm sorry, last week, is that, and, and the goal, remember, part of the goal of this was not just to change the administrator, but ensure that our practice followed our policy, right? And that's very important. And so, one of the things we realized was how the handbook read with regard to holidays that the county observes had not been updated since 2012. It had been updated on what was approved and what county, or county employees were, were observing, but it had not been updated with regard to the writing and how it read in our employee handbook. So we caught that, and as I told you, we're going to continue to find things to change, but we're going to get this one in. And so just adding Presidents' Day, making sure that everybody understands that's the third Monday. Easter, it actually observed the Monday after Easter. However, the practice of the county is to observe the Friday before Easter, and that's what it has been. So we made that change in there as well. And then Juneteenth was added several years back, but it was not added to the employee handbook as a holiday that was recognized by the county. And then the day before Thanksgiving was again, that's been observed for years, however, it was not updated in employee handbook. So we just made that minor change to the holidays observed to make sure that what the county was observing matched the policy. So that's just the only addition to that.
Okay, do we have to handle that separate?
No, sir. That, that is, because you're at second reading, we were entitled only last time. All council members have this, so your action on this incorporates this as well.
Okay. All righty, so we got the, the reading of 2024-8. Need a motion on that?
You've got, you, you got to vote on, you got a motion and a second on A-
We did have a motion and a second on that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. You got a motion and seconds, any further discussion on that? All in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
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 Denial, unspoken. Okay, moving to C is the first reading of 2024-9, to amend the county organizational chart to provide for reorganization and of and positions in animal control and county fire, formerly rural fire, to provide for related matters on this.
We should be on B. We should be on B, 2024-8.
Well, I thought we read that, and you said we had a motion and a second.
That, that was 2024-7.
Yeah, okay. All right, we'll go back then. Let's back up in to go to B then. Okay, revoke and existing procurement, contract and policies, handbooks and manuals for related policies and procedures, and their related enabling ordinances, adopting the procurement slash contracting manual, including the use of purchasing cards, confirming the county administrative authority to set administrative policies and procedures, making conforming changes to the county code of ordinance, and providing for other related matters. Then, okay, now we'll need a motion on this.
I'll make a motion that we approve the second reading of 2024-8.
A second, got a motion and a second, any, any discussions on this? Here none? Well, let, let me mention one thing. I, I talked to Mr. Hester about this, or Tommy, I don't remember which one it was. But there's a county in the state that has had a tremendous problem with credit cards. And for the sake of argument, I think we need to make sure our policy, Mr. Darby told me it was a good policy, that there's been some, one county's really significant amount of problems with credit cards, including the county administrator. So we, we don't, we don't need to just take this lightly. This is a serious thing as far as being able to keep track of the money.
Thank you, Mr. Ray, and, and for council members. Mr. Darby and his staff have done a really good job. He's here, if he, Mr. Darby, if you'd like to speak to that at all. But I have reviewed the policy as well, and I'm very confident in the policy. Plus, the accounting for these through our bank on the back end really doesn't allow any room for, for, for anybody to mess with this, really.
Right. So I, just, just to highlight, good evening, council. You should have a copy of the policy in front of you. If you turn to, I think, page, let's see, page 17, so that addresses inappropriate use procedures. So we've detailed out, you know, what an inappropriate use is, what an infraction is, what county staff is to do if, if there is an infraction. And there's also an abuse and fraud rule within the policy. And if you see down in there at the bottom of the page, it says exceptions. It says there are no exceptions to the policy. And so we, we take this very seriously. Also on page, I believe, on page 18, under legal issues, it says, the cardholder may be subject to suspension termination of card privileges or other disciplinary action up to, including termination of employment and criminal prosecution to the full extent of the law. So we, we make it very clear that, that, you know, there's no exceptions for inappropriate use. There's also reconciliation process within the policy that, that basically is for approvals for cardholders, for their supervisors, all the way up through Mr. Hester. So I think, I think the, the policy addresses those issues.
And I think what helps us as well with accountability is the fact that Mr. Darby's an elected official, he's separate from me, and so he's the, he's the check and balance for our side of it as well. So it's really, there's a two factor there that, that you have.
Any further questions? Any more discussion? All right, all in favor of passing the second reading of 2024-8, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, you none, unspoken. All right, moving to C, the first reading of 2024-9, to amend the county's organizational chart to provide for reorganization and positions in animal control and county fire, formerly rural fire, and to provide for related matters. Need a motion on that? I make a motion that we accept first reading to be able to ask questions. Okay, now, okay, we'll do that when we get us out.
Second.
You got a second? My folks have got a second now. Can you explain a little bit about, it says county fire formerly rural fires. Rural fire been done away with, that hadn't been before this council?
No, sir, and, and maybe that's, there was only rural fire prior to. There's still rural fire, but there's, with this change, it adds county fire, which, so maybe just a, not a good wording on that, but that, that's all that is. There still is rural fire. Yes, sir, good question, and thank you for, for catching that. If you would like, Mr. Chair, what I could do is have, I've got directors from both of these areas that could come up and explain their organizational chart changes, rather than me giving the explanation. So Ms., Ms. Jessie Ruckert, if you'd come up, please, she's our animal control director, you all know her. We'll let her explain hers, and this was totally her idea, and a really good one, and I want you to hear it from her.
Good afternoon, Chairman and members of council. Thank you, guys, for this opportunity tonight, and I wanted to talk to you about these changes that we're hoping to make. We hope to move one full-time position over to two part-time positions. Currently, we've had a lot of issues within the shelter with the members. Right now, we've had three employees since November of last year maintaining that shelter, and problems that have arose in our, we have shelter, we work with SE, South Carolina Detention, I mean, Department of Corrections, excuse me, and they give us trustees. We have two currently, and they're there pretty much all day long. And a problem that we're starting to see is if the demand is in the field, we have no one there to even manage the cleaning of those people. So what we're hoping is to bring in two part-time positions, to delegate the assignments within the shelter to those part-time positions, and those people can take over the basic intake of the animals, the basic adoptions, and maintain the development within the shelter itself versus the areas on the road.
And Ms. Ruckert, speak a little bit to the fact that sometimes there's a lot of weekend work as well, and so with part-time, you can schedule some of the part-time on the weekend to help clean up, which alleviates overtime-
Yes, sir.
-for, for your staff as well.
Yes, sir. So a lot of the things over the weekend duty is you have responding officer that is on call, and you have an employee that is at the shelter that is working typically about four hours a day on the weekends. They cover anything from taking care of the medical animals to cleaning the shelter. Sometimes that can take up to eight hours, depending on the, you know, the demand within our shelter and what we have for that week. And we're hoping that this part-time position, we can delegate to those weekend shifts so that we're not tying animal control officers up all week long and all weekend, and they can respond to the emergencies in a timely manner.
So the full-time position was doing, I'm trying to figure out how two part-time, so what, what hours will these people be working? I'm just trying to-
I'm aiming for hopefully, maybe roughly about 25 a week, aiming mostly for the weekend hours to alleviate the responsibility of the-
So both part-timers will be on the weekend?
Yes, sir, we're hoping to rotate one, one per weekend.
And Mr. Guy, just, the, there's two things that come into play with the, the part-time. So full-time, it's hard to get full-time employees for what some of our full-time positions pay.
Okay.
Right? That's tough. And when you add the benefits into that package, the cost of that package for that one employee, she could work two part-time employees, 25 hours each, and still not even exceed that salary and benefits. In fact, it would save pretty much the entire benefits portion of that package. Plus, people, other people that have full-time jobs that may be looking for something part-time with a little extra income, this is much more appealing to people to come and do this part-time than it is a full-time position cleaning kennels and stuff out.
They'd be on the same status as our recycling center employees.
That's correct. They'd just be part-time employees. That's correct, yes, sir.
And if I may, currently, there are the animal control positions, the animal control are currently the caregivers of the shelter.
I've heard some nice comments about what she's doing in animal control, and I appreciate that.
I appreciate that.
Will you speak that into the mic, Mr. Ray, into the mic- Into the microphone?
Mr. Hester, I've understood she's doing a real good job from my folks out there, and I appreciate what she's doing for animal control.
I appreciate that, sir.
When are you gonna build a new animal control center? I'm waiting on that.
We're working on it.
Yeah, that's it, we're working on it.
She's working on it, actually.
Hard.
She's doing a fantastic job, though.
And I hope to come to you all in a couple weeks, I want to give you some updates. We've developed a lot of new programs and things that I think it would be good for you guys to hear about. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, does anybody from rural fire would like to speak?
Mr. Benson, you want to come and handle the organizational chart change on that?
Mr. Chair, council, the organizational chart change is in reference to the February 20th meeting in Great Falls on the presentation of the MOU with Great Falls, the town specifically, to provide fire service protection to the town in addition to having paid full-time firefighting staff in the county, specifically Great Falls. With the adoption of that MOU, which I think will be coming up in a couple items later, that will bring on full-time staff that will be managed by county fire directly supervised me versus rural fire. So to kind of uncross the words of rural fire versus county fire, now that will include an addition of seven full-time employees.
Any questions for Mr. Benson?
Wait, are we gonna hear the MOU tonight?
Yes, so that'll be, that'll actually be two more items down the list. And what Mr. Agi brought up, we need to make one correction, which we'll bring back for second reading on this. And that's on the main org chart, the one side will be county fire, the other side will be rural fire, we'll keep that separate. We just didn't differentiate it on there, but we can make that change for next reading to make sure that that's very understandable.
More questions for Mr. Benson? All right, number up.
Thank you.
Questions or comments, we're ready to vote. All in favor of accepting this as the first reading of 2024-9, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
You're not on the vote. All right, moving along to D, the first reading of 2024-10 to amend Chapter 46, street sidewalks and other public processes, Article 4, the use of public roads, Section 46-93 of the Code of Ordinance of the County of Chester, South Carolina, and to provide for revisions to litter enforcements and to provide for other related matters. Mr. Vaughn, you have something you want to say on that?
Yes, since I started serving on county council, I've tried to ensure that the county is effectively as possible fighting the littering problem that plagues our beautiful county and the entire state. I work closely with all the local organizations and Catawba Riverkeeper Foundation to clean up our county. I have personally picked up bunches of bags of trash. In my first term, I began looking at our litter ordinance and advocated changes, beefed up immediately then. And the years since then, I have worked closely with TJ Martin and identified several problems that still affect our litter control ordinance. I have also had conversations with our magistrates and legislative delegation about how courts work in relation to litter offenders. The changes I advocate now are a result of all of this. They're not extensive, and there's more to do, but we do not need to wait to make these changes. In the text of this ordinance regarding the sentencing of offenders, people that litter, there's occurrence of the word must numerous times, and one of the changes is to change must to shall. That's a minor change. In other sections, several other sections of the ordinance regarding sentences of community service, picking up litter or other forms of public service, there's a phrase that says which shall be under the supervision of the court, and that's been removed as well. State law has been changed regarding the necessity of supervision while performing community service. Section 4693-6 taken, is taken straight from state law, this is from our ordinance. We've added, this is one of the major changes of our ordinance. Nothing in this section shall be construed as granting any cause of action against the state, any political subdivision, or any employee thereof acting in their official capacity to an individual performing community service under this section who is completing litter pickup without direct oversight, including any claim under workers' compensation. Routine follow-up to ensure completion of litter pickup by any county, municipality, or state employee is not considered oversight. That's the same thing that's in the state law, and now it's gonna be in our county ordinance. This basically means that you don't need a supervisor. If you get sentenced to go out and pick up litter on the side of the road because you threw litter on the side of the road, you don't need a supervisor. This is a significant change that was crafted at the state level and which we now should adopt. The idea that supervision for litter offenders sentenced to clean up their mess will no longer be an issue for the courts or the county.
All right, we'll need a motion and a second on that to ask Mr. Vaughn if any questions, anything.
I'll make a motion for council to approve the first reading of 2024-10.
I need a second.
A second.
Second, Miss Mosley. My question is, would be on this, is all the changes you made, would this be covered up under this first reading ordinance?
The ordinance is, what you're reading there, those changes, that's just to show you what's been stricken, so that is all covered.
That is, that is, that is the first reading of the 2024-10, correct?
Correct.
Any further questions for Mr. Vaughn or anything about the litter or enforcement? You're none? All in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
You're not on the vote. All right, moving along to E, resolution of 2024-1, the acceptance of amendment memorandum of understanding for Great Falls Fire Department. Need a motion and a second?
I'll make a motion for council to approve Resolution 2024-1 to accept the memorandum of understanding for the Great Falls Fire Department.
Need a second?
A second.
Second, Miss Mosley, any comments or questions?
Great Falls has had a good bit of upheaval in their fire department over the past few, past years, a couple of years. And this, I think this memo of understanding between the county and the Great Falls will be a real improvement for District 2, not only just the people that live in the city limits of Great Falls, but the whole district, too, the fire district of Great Falls. It should make a lot of good changes for fire protection and address the safety of the people that live in that area, and I'm really happy to see this happen.
Is there limits, is there a boundary for this?
For the fire district?
Five, yeah.
Yeah, there's a map that shows, it goes outside that limit.
If you have some, I don't know if you have some of it or not, you might, but basically it is, if you're going down Richburg Road, you know where the industrial park is, right in there is about where Great Falls Fire District begins. If you go up 97, I'm not exactly sure, somewhere up there about where the little racetrack is at the creek, somewhere right in there. And then when you come up 21, you get up there about Deer Branch, somewhere right in there about Deer Branch.
Yeah, I believe you're right.
The issue I have with that, Mike, I agree with you 100%, but they've got to have volunteers, and Mr. Hester and I talked a little bit about that the day we had them on, but hopefully Mr. Benson can fix the volunteer problem because two or three people can't fight a structural fire. You got to have some volunteers to make that happen. But I think he's in the right direction on it, so.
I agree with you. I spoke with James Weston this past week, and James is the driver for that department. And he, I think James is, there's some bumps in the road for the transition, but he's confident in this being a good thing and on the whole of Great Falls.
If he says, if he says this gospel to me.
Mr. Chairman, if I just explain real quick for public knowledge of what this MOU is, so that, and this is more for the general public than anybody else. The county currently owns the fire station, and the county currently owns most of the equipment. There are some, some equipment that the volunteers own in that station. Volunteer system will stay just the way it is, and I too spoke to Mr. Weston, we actually spoke this afternoon. And again, he's very optimistic of this being a very good thing for, for the, not just the town of Great Falls, this district goes outside of the town of Great Falls. It's an entire district that goes all the way up to Richburg, all the way up to Fort Long, and all the way over to Rossville's districts, those are the surrounding districts, and then all the way to county lines. And so it's a large district, and what this MOU does is, it is the town of Great Falls given us the authority to provide fire protection inside their town, and we need that to take over that fire service inside their town. And so that's one of the things this MOU did for the county. The other thing that it does is the town of Great Falls will pay Chester County $175,000 for the next five years for that fire service. After the five years, that will be, that full burden will be on the county. That 170, how was that $175,000 come up with? Their budget right now for their fire service was $186,000. And so we took $175,000, which covers basically one firefighter full-time, which is what they were attempting to have, and so we took that, they agreed to pay that for five years during the transition as new business, and obviously our revenue streams increase. And then Chester County will pay the other portion of that cost to provide full-time. Full-time, what will it look like? Two full-time firefighters, 365 days a year, 24 hours a day, plus a leadership position that will work a Monday through Friday schedule, call it a cap, then assistant chief, whatever the terminology Mr. Benson decides to use for that position. So basically, it'll be three personnel, two full-time, and then the volunteers. And so really, that's what this MOU encompasses, and we will move through the rest of this year, this is for everyone. So we will go through the rest of this fiscal year, making sure that they have what they currently have staff-wise, and that that's manned, and that's already been planned out and being taken care of through volunteers, through part-time employees that they had, and so forth. And then as we, this org chart, as it's approved, will give us the ability to start recruiting and hiring for those full-time positions. So hopefully, while there might be a little bit of overlap come June, going into July, this will all be in the next fiscal year, so there won't be any amendments to our budget this fiscal year.
Any council person, I know we'll go vote on, we hadn't voted, we voted on this.
No, sir, need a motion and a second. Oh, you got a motion and a second, I'm sorry.
Any question for Mr. Hester? All right, you're none? All in favor of the resolution for 2024-1, the memorandum for understanding of Great Falls Fire Department, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
All right, you're not on the vote. All right, the number seven, we have a consent agenda here, which covers A through F on the agenda here. I need a motion to accept this as a consent agenda.
I'll make a motion, we accept this as a consent agenda, 7A through F.
Got a second, that's second. Got a motion and a second, any discussion? You're none? All in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
You're not on the vote. Also, we'd have another consent agenda from A through D, which is the approval of a consent agenda to uphold the planning commission decision to deny, to deny the rezoning request from A through D. Need a motion on that?
So, let me just clarify, so your affirmative action on this, I know this gets a little confusing, but the original motions for this were to deny, or to uphold the planning commission's position to deny. So your affirmative action on the consent agenda, voting to accept the consent agenda, will uphold the planning commission?
To deny.
Correct.
The rezoning. All right, any question? You're none? All in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Motion and a second.
Yeah, we didn't get one.
Oh, we never get, okay, all right, need a motion and a second on that, I'm getting ahead of a second.
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda for items 8A through D.
A second.
Second, okay. Now, is any further discussion?
Mr. Hester, if you would remind the public what a consent agenda is.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Vaughn, and so one of the things we're trying to do is make some of our meetings a little more efficient with regard to everyone's time. And so a consent agenda means that we put items that typically either have no opposition or that the community, there's no more discussion, that we're at third reading, or for whatever reason, those items could be voted on all at once to save time. Now, understand that any council member that's up here has the ability, if there's something on a consent agenda, and they want to pull that from the consent agenda, all they have to do is say, "Mr. Chairman," when we get to that consent agenda, they say, "Mr. Chairman, I would like to pull item," it could be A, B, C, whatever, "from that consent agenda" and have it for a normal motion and second. But most of these items that you will see in the future that are on consent agendas have already had that laborious discussion and explanation at other council meetings, and it's just an effort to make these meetings a little more efficient for everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Hester, for that explanation. Okay, then we do have a motion and a second, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, all in favor of consent agenda for number eight, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
You're not on the vote. All right, Mr. Hester, we'll turn it back over to you.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna keep it, I've got two things tonight. I've got an update from Chester County Museum. Ms. Liz Anderson had informed me this past, when I say this past week, it's last week, but she wanted to say that, tell me and I want to tell everyone, that our major grant application to the South County Humanities Council resulted in the highest award given, and that was $15,000, for Ms. Ann's autograph collection, and she wanted to thank us so much for the support and all the good things that are going on. And Ms. Ann's autograph collection, Mr. Stoudamire, that was the one that you realized, you and Robert Hall realized that had all the famous people, that Ms. Ann Marion had signatures from 11 Hall of, of the first Hall of Fame inductees into the baseball Hall of Fame, is what I was.
Very first Hall of Fame ceremony.
Very first ceremony, as well as many, many other, just really unique people throughout the history, governors, throughout, all the governors and different presidents and so forth. So we received a grant to help display that and to preserve that, so she wanted to thank us, and they're doing great things out there at our museum, so thanks, Ms. Anderson. And then the last thing that I just wanted to, this is where I like to really brag on our employees, so we had an issue last week in county government, believe it or not, and it had to do with a project that wasn't quite coming to fruition, and at no fault of county employees, but from the standpoint of some of our outside folks involved in those projects. And so three of our directors that are all here, we've got Mr. Mike Levister, Robert Hall, and Mr. Harold Hayes, we had a brief communication sometime last week about the problems we were having getting the contractors kind to get to the finish line. And these guys, all three, went down to David Miners Park and spent about six hours, took our electrician, got the inspectors out there, got the contractors out there, and held their feet to the fire. And they wouldn't leave, and wouldn't let them leave till something got accomplished. They went back the next day to make sure that the follow-up was done, and then Mr. Levister calls me on Saturday and he says, "Ron, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go get my county car, I'm going down to David Miners, I just want to let you know I'm gonna be driving the county car." And I was like, "Well, that's fine, that's what it's for." And he went down there on a Saturday and made sure that the lights were energized, and then these guys all got and beat down Duke Power to get it turned on first thing today. And so what their end goal was, was the softball games that are going on down in Great Falls. And so what their end goal was, was the softball games that are going on down in Great Falls, they didn't have lights. And so they weren't able to play, or they were playing into the dark. And these guys went, and I mean, they took it head-on and held people's feet to the fire, and got it done. And so there's a game tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night's first game.
And they will have lights, finally.
Softball team.
They made them grade it out, they made them clean their mess up. And I turned Mr. Levister loose. I don't always turn him loose, but I turned him loose on this one, too. But that's what, you know, that's what we've tried then still in our leadership. And if you look back on that back row, and kind of a little bit ahead of the back row, those are all directors, those are all leaders in this county. They're all here. They're all here at this council meeting. And some of them, not by their choice, I'm just kidding, but they are all here, and they all work hard. And when I see them get together as a team, because they each have their own unique knowledge and abilities, but when they get together as a team like they did, and they get things, man, I'm so proud. So, thank you to them, and I just wanted to highlight that with council. And that's it for my administrator's report.
Let me ask you one thing, you brought lights up, you mind if I ask him?
No.
Have you, have you paid any attention to the power poles along Highway Nine?
I did after you told me that, and.
They're still crooked. Golly!
I, I looked, Mr. AJ, I couldn't, the biggest ones are still crooked, but the newest ones, I, when you say crooked, it's because they kind of run like that a little bit?
No, no, I'm talking about Al.
Straight up and down? I couldn't see.
If you look at the one at Burger King, the one right there at Sun Fiber, some, a pole is supposed to be straight up, a little like that.
All right, you guys get your levels, and that's your next mission, right there. I, we will take a look at it. I heard you say it, and I drove by there the other day, and I took a look, but I didn't notice.
I'm gonna go laser, and I'm gonna go up there and look at it.
Yeah?
Do companies coming up, DG, they've been doing work there also, and some of the poles are a little bit crooked, especially the new ones?
We'll have to check that out.
If I can, I'd like to echo Mr. Hester's comments about our leadership team. This was a very important issue for the, the folks that are playing ball down in Great Falls, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate you quick action and getting those lights back on.
Let me tell you one other thing about one of your employees, and I hope he takes this in the right way. I, I, I went to a call, which I normally don't run anymore, but this, this gentleman was, he, he was not here. And so we started CPR on him, got that done. Turns out his blood sugar was like thirty-eight or thirty-seven. And for years, I've been an advanced EMT, and I can start IVs. And in Richburg, a lot of times, I'm the only one out there that can do that. So I was not going to renew my AMET license, my certification. And I went and talked to Mr. Faulkner, and he, he bent over backwards to help me, and we got that done. So I have my certification. So if the ambulance had not been in town that day, and we, we did what was an IO, they drilled, drilled an IV into his leg instead of trying to stick him. But for the sake of the argument, long story, John, thank you very much, and Ms. Mittel, they, they bent over backwards to help me, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you for saying that.
All right. Thank y'all, and thank all the department heads for being so active and out there getting the job done. Like I say, if you want it done right, you do it yourself, isn't it? So thank y'all for doing that. And all right, moving on to number ten, we don't have any old business, and moving to eleven on the new business, which is emergency service update. Mr. Benson, emergency service director.
Dan, good evening again. So tonight, we're gonna give you a general update of emergency services, more specifically on EMS, we'll touch a little bit on fire. So just to begin with, where we came with emergency services, so I started this role October sixteenth. So approximately the last four months, we can kind of bring you up to date where we are on that process. So the first two months, my primary focus is taking in the current operations of EMS and taking stocks of where our strengths, and also what our areas of improvement that needed to be had. So I kind of took the, the platform of a smokes, focus on the small things, and when the bigger tasks are in front of us, we can tackle them with no problems. So that's kind of our marching orders of how we're gonna improve and succeed. So, in that first two months, bringing up the first of the year, brought in Mr. Faulkner as the deputy director of EMS. Now to some great things for us, our capital improvement, capital items. We did a refresh of the furniture in our day rooms, which was sorely needed, it's a very good morale booster. To the best of my knowledge, and from history, was the first time that dayroom furniture had been replenished in about eight years of all EMS stations. So thank you very much. We also brought in a new QRV. It's about eighty percent, we're not quite in service yet. The importance of bringing on that QRV is we don't have a backup for our supervisors. And per DEHEC standards and regulations, you can't just hop in a spare ambulance and use that as a supervisor's vehicle, cause it's against regulation. So now we have a backup vehicle. Also, that gives us another opportunity to respond anywhere we need, cause we have daytime staff, Mr. Faulkner, paramedic, Ms. Grace, she is in advanced EMT school right now. So if our supervisors are out, they can get in that extra QRV that's for backup and respond to other calls as well as need be. So our, our daytime staff is very dynamic as well. You also approved for us to have some funding for Great Falls EMS station for the bay. The bay was not heated. Where that in lies a problem with us is keeping our medications temperature and climate controlled, and the way we were doing that was our charging system on our ambulance. Well, in the winter times, it would burn up motors on that ambulance, the blower motors. So by installing this heater system, that's gonna help alleviate and general maintenance issues and bring down hopefully our maintenance costs on that. In addition to that, there was no exhaust system, so we're adding exhaust fans into the station. That project was hopefully already scheduled to be done. Unfortunately, the heater came in damaged, and we had to send it back on the bidder that won the project. So if we were to expedite that process, it would cost us a little bit more money. So that should be starting in the next week or two. But getting the exhaust out of the station is all important for our employees to be safe, good clean air quality. Nobody wants diesel fumes in their living quarters or in the bay. And then in April, we'll be receiving, hopefully, our next ambulance, we're supposed to go at the end of this month to inspect it, make sure everything's good with it, and take delivery of it in April. So here comes some of the exciting news that I have, I'm proud to announce. So it's long overdue, especially being a citizen of Chester County, this taking a little bit of legwork, but we have been working with a couple of the fire departments, to include West Chester Fire Department. And when they built their Wilkesburg Fire Station in, I think it was right at ten years ago, the initial plan was that for to hopefully eventually house EMS, and that was a one percent project. Well, it came a little short, and we know that we need an ambulance on the western side of the county for response times. Right now, at our best, we're looking at about thirty minutes to most northern and southern points on the western side, and that, that's unacceptable. So we have worked with some state legislatures to work some funding in, hopefully to expand the station, and whether that happens or not, this is still gonna be a top priority on our list. And with unanimous vote of West Chester Volunteer Fire Department, their board of directors, their fire chief, they have voted for us to expand that station to accommodate full-time EMS, as well as potential future of full-time fire, to provide fire protection to the western side, which is gonna tremendously increase the service to our citizens that, that is lacking currently, because that's the ruralist area of our county, and it's very hard to recruit volunteers, and it's hard to get a good response time out there when you don't have the amenities out there that you need. So leading into that, the next part is, within our budget constraints, we currently have some days funded for a fifth EMS unit. And in the meantime, to get that service started up as fast as possible, as we all know, and this is another announcement, North Chester Fire Department's substation on Center Road will accommodate an ambulance and staffing for daytime. It's not set up for a 24/7 operation. So the North Chester Fire Department, the volunteers, fire chief, they're all unanimously voted for us to put our ambulance in their station until we can get West Chester up and running a hundred percent. So hopefully, within the next month, we'll have an ambulance in West Chester with, hopefully about three days a week, within our current budget that we have, and then starting the new fiscal year, and moving forward, when we have the facilities, we'll have a EMS crew 24/7, 365, on the western side of the county. And that, that is very, very exciting for me personally, and I hope it is for y'all and the citizens of Chester County. And to close off on that before I hand it over, John, just let him give y'all, introduce himself, and the update on EMS, just a few things I want to highlight and touch base on is, North Chester Fire Department will have their grand opening of the Center Road Fire Station on April sixth, starting at 10:00 a.m., going until about 1:00 p.m. Unless we're having a good time, we might go to 2:00. And if we have enough burgers and hot dogs left over, we'll see how it goes. And then last but not least, we just want to put an emphasis and a highlight, because we have daylight savings time coming up, and just want to make sure the citizens know and think about our smoke detectors. Make sure that we check our smoke detectors, change the batteries in them, make sure they're operational. If you have any issues with a smoke detector, do not hesitate to contact my office. We are in partnership with Red Cross, we can come out there, get you new smoke detectors, install them for you, and make sure that you have a good fire safety plan if you so choose to let us do that with you. So that will cap off that side, and I want to hand it over to Mr. Faulkner.
Thank you. So taking over January first, we've ran thirteen hundred calls this year, that's pretty much in line with what we did last year, so it's pretty consistent. We have reduced overtime by between eighteen and twenty-two percent since January first. We still got a lot of work to do, however, we're actively recruiting. You know, this industry's tough, so we're still trying to get out there and getting, you know, getting more EMTs, paramedics, and hopefully, we'll start seeing those recruiting efforts soon. We've also partnered with Apprenticeship Carolina for educational purposes, so we can take our people and get them in class, get them in schools, get more paramedics, which is what we need. We have hired eight new EMTs, or advanced EMTs, this year, so we have the advanced EMTs that have a little bit more capabilities, you know, on the streets. We've been working with Mr. Shulkey with the IT department, just to make more, you know, more savings across the board. We've eliminated the fiber internet in Great Falls, or in the process of eliminating it, and process of eliminating the DSL in Richburg, which is gonna save EMS $8,750 annually. So that's a pretty, pretty big cut. We are moving over to IOPS 360 from a LadTech. LadTech is our scheduling software. Going to the IOPS 360 is a really big deal for us. It incorporates everything, okay? So it's not just scheduling, it's incorporating our narcotics, it's incorporating our inventory control, which in the long run is gonna reduce how much we're spending in inventory, cause we can cut waste that way and not order, you know, too much stuff, so it's gonna really help us out that way, as well as doing the scheduling and active 911s. And this also comes with a saving of about another $3,500 annually, so we're, we're saving monies there as well. Mr. Shulkey's went hard, he's, we've gone to eliminating inactive phone lines of all things, saving us another $7,200 annually, so that's a lot. One of the big things that we have done is, myself and Mr. Benson met with our billing company to review our costs and our revenues. We reduced their billing fees from six percent to 4.5 percent with no loss in services, so they're providing the same services for one and a half percent less. We were also able to change the structure on how we're paying for our electronic charting. So all in all, this is gonna save us close to $39,000 to $40,000 annually, so I think that's a pretty, pretty big deal. So all in all, just in the first few months, we found about $52,000 in savings, so put that in perspective, that's a, you know, that's another paramedic, so that's a pretty good deal. It's just the beginning, we've got a long way to go, but I think we're definitely moving in a positive direction. So thanks.
All right. Thank y'all for those reports. Does anybody in council have any questions or comments for these two gentlemen?
You guys are doing a great job.
Thank you.
Keep it up.
And just to echo on what Mr. Head said, or Mr. Hester said earlier, was that we couldn't do this without the other department heads and department members. I mean, we, Mr. Shulkey, Mr. Hall, everybody in this room that we work with, I mean, we're brand new on the block, and if it wasn't for support of the existing members, we wouldn't be able to get what we've achieved so far. So thank you to all of y'all.
Glad to see that arm out of a sling there, Mr. Faulkner.
Thanks. Me, too.
You backing a hundred percent on that?
Not quite, brother.
Well, one of the things that y'all do, and not just y'all, but the first responders and, and everything, if y'all had come to Richburg last couple of weeks ago and saw the Wilson family and the gratitude that, that that community expressed to those men and women in that fire department, EMS department, whoever responded that call to that little girl, it was absolutely heart-warming. And thank y'all very much for that, the citizens. The Grand Daddy spoke specifically about a couple of people that actually don't live in, one of them lives in the county, and one of them lives outside of Chester, and what they did for that family, and that's appreciated.
Ms. Chairman, if I'm, if I may, real quick, I just want everybody to, I want to reiterate two things. One, for those citizens that are here that may not live in that western side of the community, how important what is going on with EMS in the western side, when literally the closest response is right here, behind this building, to the furthest reaches of the western community. And this will make a difference in life or death, and, and people's lives, and that is so important. And this was a, this was a priority that we've had, and you've heard me talk about it, we, this has been our priority, and now these guys are making it come to fruition, and that's follow-through. And they've been a little generous or conservative with what they say. I want, this is what is so important about this staff that you see, and, and them working together, because they all do work together, but they look for every penny. These are taxpayer dollars, and they look for every penny. And when you hear somebody say, "We save $3,700 annually," you might say to yourself, "3,700? Y'all got a $32 million budget." But if everybody found $3,700, and if they keep finding $3,700, and $1,800, and $2,000, and $3,000, this money adds up. He just said fifty-something thousand dollars. Well, when you add in his overtime savings, we're over $100,000. And so, these are real dollars that go into our budget, that they're finding savings, and this is what's happening throughout the county, and that's fiscal responsibility. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank y'all. All right, moving right along to number twelve, which is executive session. Can you believe that we don't have any business to take care of in executive session? So we'll, we're gonna skip executive session tonight, so I don't think we're gonna need any action on that. So we'll move along to council comment.
Yeah, I got, go ahead, Aaron.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. No, 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 I was just wanting to say before, I don't want, I don't want to beat you to the punch, but just congratulate Pete Wilson and his wife Caroline, they had their little girl the other day, so that's why Pete's not here. She's about five days old, so he finally got a girl. So I just want to say congratulations to them.
Yeah, and I, I just want to reiterate what Mr. Hester was saying about the staff we have here in Chester County. I really, I've been a citizen of Chester County for forty years of my fifty years of life, and I really see a difference in our, in our county government now, one that I am proud of as a council person and as a citizen. I am proud to see how we're moving. I'm proud of the staff that you've, you've put together. It's been over a year, a little over a year now since I've been a council person, and I think that we've been, really had some, some real positive strides here since I've been on this council. And I want to thank Mr. Hester, and thank all of the department heads for everything that you do, and just keep, keep doing what you're doing, it's, it's really making me proud to be a citizen of Chester.
And I will say this, too, I've talked to people a lot, and I, I just to brag on you guys as well, you know, I said people are finally, I don't want to say finally, are excited to have direction and enjoy working here, and, you know, enjoy what they do, and it shows, and it shows throughout the community, so I just want to let you guys know that as well, that people do recognize it, even if you don't hear it, you know, or see it, they do recognize it. And I just want to kind of reiterate that, too, because that kind of promotes you guys as well. I do appreciate all that you do, and it, it shows, it shows everybody's on the same page, we're wanting to do good things, and that's exactly what we're doing. So just wanted to say congratulations, and thank you all, appreciate it.
Anybody else?
I'd like to remind the general public that on the third Saturday of every month, the Fort Long Community Center has a free food distribution, and a the Fort Long Community Center has a free food distribution, and remind everybody to come by and pick up some food. They'll have it posted on Facebook, the locations and the times and everything, so come by and get some.
Well, Ms. Mosley, you stole my thunder.
Sorry.
It wasn't, it wasn't, Mr. Guy.
I love baby news, I have to say it. It excites me.
I also would like to congratulate Mr. Wilson and his wife, having a beautiful young daughter. They got two, two sons and a daughter now, so they gotta, they gotta, I know I told him, I sent him a text when he came out and told him, I says, "Congratulations, Pete," says, "The girls are special." So they are, I know I got two, two great-granddaughters, and they are special. So I know that he's there taking care of the boys and letting mama rest a little bit and maybe changing the baby's diaper. So Pete, if you're lucky tonight, congratulations. Any other? Need a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Vegas.
Second. Got a motion in a second, all in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.